Okay, it's, are you ready?
Ready.
Okay, it's seven oh one, I'm gonna call the village, there's board meeting to order. Please silence all cell phones during the meeting and look for the approval of the agenda. So, second. All the favors say aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Item three, public interference and citizens comments on items on this on this agenda, items will not be debated on or acted upon at the meeting, but will refer to the proper Stafford Committee if action required, and please keep comments to three minutes during the like the speed. Very none. Item four, approval of the consent agenda. I move to approve the consent agenda. Okay, we have motion in a second. All the favors say aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Public works and safety, item A, consideration discussion, but discussion special event permit for Boos Brew's pub crawl October twenty first, twenty twenty-three. Thank you, did this come before the?
We discussed this and it was given the go ahead, so both A and B. So I'll move to approve the special event permits for Boos and Bruce.
Second. Okay, we have motion in a second, any further discussions? Very none, all the favors say aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Question, consideration, operator license for Samantha. Monsieur and Andrea Faust.
This too cleared through Jeff.
Okay.
So. Now go ahead and make a motion to approve this operator license for Monsieur and Faust.
Okay. Okay. A favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Item six, parks and rec, consideration discussion candy cane inclusive playground. Shelley, are you gonna speak to that, or who is gonna speak to that?
You wanna start Lauren, and then I can.
Yeah, either I can register Chuck, I don't know if you want to do. Okay. Yeah, I I provided a brief overview in the notes, so that page one, so. The Parkson Rec Committee discussed this last week, so New Glares cares is interested in applying for a grant for an inclusive playground to replace the candy cane playground currently. They came to the committee and provided kind of a rough budget and proposed design for the project. Just for the background, so an inclusive playground, if you're not familiar, is kind of a playground that allows kids of kind of all abilities to utilize the playground. It's a really great asset in a community. So New Glares cares is working on applying for a grant, and as part of that grant, there is a requirement that the village would provide some kind of contribution to the project. Now they could go and apply for this grant and say the village is contributing X amount, and they get the grant, we could always say, you know, we can't, and that would be okay. But they just wanna kind of get an okay to move forward with applying for the grant. And so. I don't think, Shelley, do you wanna go from there?
So. So first I just wanna say that we understand that this has to go through the formal process, we just wanted to kickstart the process by gathering information, ideas, by getting some initial bids and putting together an initial proposed plan. So I've talked to Becca and a couple others in the community, so we are looking for feedback to do like small focus group to see, you know, we don't wanna make assumptions about, you know, what kind of equipment is desirable, but we also wanna make sure that the equipment can be utilized by again, children of all ages and abilities, so it will be like mixed teams. The one thing that you'll note to the drawings that you have is to be considered fully inclusive, they can't have hundred percent wood shifts, right? So you see it's got the rubber matting in those pictures, I don't look through, but he got a picture of that, or it's just a park and rock, but if you basically take the cost of the equipment, let's say the equipment's eighty to ninety thousand dollars, that rubber matting is another eighty to ninety thousand dollars, so the reality is without great dollars or outside money, we likely can't afford something that is fully inclusive. Now, we could do certain things that would put that rubber matting or some other, you know, sidewalk or laptop to be able to access certain pieces of equipment without having to be entirely wood shifts like it is today. So essentially, what we're just looking for is now your approval to continue moving forward with these discussions. Applying for the grant, so there's a group, an organization called Everything's Possible Foundation. They are the entity that we're working with to apply for the grant. I also since last week's park and rep communicating talked with one of the co-chairs for the Platte project. So that will put a policy, a policy, like right in last year, well, it just opened actually earlier this year, it was quite a project. They raised over two point six million dollars. But their park is over twenty-one thousand square feet, Candy Can is like forty-one hundred square feet, so much different scale. They got a lot of federal funding though, too, when they started raising funds, it was during COVID, there was money available through federal government, through HUD. So whether any of those avenues are available to us is questionable, so we're looking more into local foundations.
So, no, I think if you just want to clarify exactly what we'd be approving, which is that we support this.
Correct.
But. Oh. There is no budgetary commitment at this point.
Correct, so the capital improvement plan is likely where we would budget for this, and that obviously still needs to get approved by the village board, I'm working through that and should be to you in October. This, I think, would fit within our debt capacity, we have some more discussions on kind of what that looks like and how we would finance it. So I guess, I think what we're looking for today is kind of a thumbs up to continue exploring this. And future discussions on how we afford to contribute to this project will be had in October. But if the village board is supportive, then New Glares cares can move forward with their grant process, because I know that's, that needs to be turned around pretty quickly.
Right, so this organization that we are applying for, they actually disperse their funds in Q four of every year, so if we don't apply now during this cycle, we wouldn't be, there wouldn't be no money available until Q four next year. And I don't know if she gave you the pictures, but I shared the group, and if anybody's done by Candy Cane Park this summer, but it is in not in good shape. One of the slides was so damaged it had to be taken down and supported up. So it's, you know. It's, it's not sections of it are no longer usable.
Do you have a better chance of getting the money for the grant if the village is stripping some funds?
Oh, absolutely, I mean, basically, the way that we have it written up today is that they, if, if the village doesn't follow through on the potential commitment, and we've indicated very clearly, there's no guarantee at this point that the village is going to contribute. But if, if they award us the grant and then the village doesn't fund any part of it, they can pull back their dollars. So that those dollars can go away, it's not like we can just take those dollars and hold them for a period of time until the village, you know, can afford to put money towards it, and, you know, our organization just raised seventy-five thousand dollars to the land, we're not there to turn around and raise another seventy-five thousand dollars to play. We're looking to try to help fill whatever gap there is between the village and foundation money, but we're not in a position to commit to raising another seventy-five thousand dollars to help fund the playground.
And you said, Lauren, we have capacity for eighty to ninety?
Yes, with the caveat that it will likely need a tax levy increase upon that next year, which is gonna be part of our conversation when the whole CIP comes to you. So if that's something the village board will not wanna do, then we will be much more limited in how we can support this project. We'd have to look at other funding sources, not that to fund this.
Well, I think, just to be, just to be clear on all of this. As Shelley stated, we are not making any commitment, any financial commitment at this time.
Correct, we're not tied to anything at this point.
Exactly.
Yeah.
But. I think it should be clarified that when you get into serious budget discussions, that this just could be not, not in the picture.
Right.
And you understand?
Yeah, I understand.
You're just trying to move the
Right.
process, the grant process forward.
That, and I guess, you know, for the benefit of the group and the others in attendance, I mean, Candy Cane has been on Park and Rep's agenda for many years, I mean, if you go back and look at the land that was done ten, twelve years ago, it was listed as one of your number top priorities then, and there's been no work done at all in that period of time, other than to replace one other slide that was destroyed.
But you understand the reason.
I understand.
You understand the reason for that.
Yeah.
I understand.
He's been on, he's been for twenty years and numerous other things.
Right.
So these are difficult, so I, I know where you're coming from when you say that. I just wanna be clear to the board. And I don't know if we're looking for a a motion here to say we support the proposition here, but I think it should be clear that you know, investors have fifty fifty chance that we can approve this in the budget, in an upcoming budget.
I agree, I mean, I think this is a budgetary issue, and we gotta make sure we've got the priorities up there.
By agreeing to the, the support, to get this going, are we also tying ourselves to financially contributing to it?
No.
At this point.
That's, that's what I was trying.
So they, they would be able to support and applying for it, if they get the grant.
Then we have to.
Then we would have that.
But at that time, then that would give us some way to get our October budget numbers in, and then we could better make a judgment.
Exactly, and then we can see, you know, if there's still a gap between when the village is able to fund and what current monies are available, you know, that our organization could commit to raising some funds, I'm just not prepared to commit to raising another seventy-five thousand dollars this year.
I guess, basically, we just need to have motion saying we support the
Is that a motion?
Candy cane grant writing process?
And I think it should also be, you know, that it's fantastic concept. Y'all, hopefully can see it through, it's, it's, not many communities have have this, our size, the inclusivity, inclusive, whatever.
Exclusive.
Inclusivity.
Thank you. It's just what we do. What we do as a community. So. I don't know what kind of I'd like to make a motion to move this forward, but I don't wanna make a motion that commits us.
That's the motion.
And so.
Got that?
So, moving forward, but no commitment.
Okay.
Love, shout out.
Is that your motion? You could support New Glares cares grant application without financial, without financial commitment.
And that will satisfy your?
Yeah, we've already, the way that we've already written it says that we have the support of the Park and Rap Committee, but that there has been no, we made it extremely clear that there's been no financial commitment given by the village of New Glares at this time. But that it would be part of your twenty twenty-four budget process, and in the CIP funding is available. That's how it's currently written, and full disclosure, I had to submit it last week at my Park and Rap Committee meeting, so I know that y'all are moving tonight, but after I got support last week, I had to submit the application, because their committee's starting to need to look at the awards, because they started giving their money out in two weeks.
You told us that.
Yeah, yeah, okay, so the way that the discussion kind of went on, I think some of you thought that we hadn't applied for yet, we have. I submitted the application on Wednesday of last week after Park and Rap Committee meeting on Tuesday night.
Yeah, I think it's still good for the board to know, just when this comes back up, or you know, through the budgeting process, that they're aware that you're going through that. I appreciate you coming in.
And I did find out, you know, from Platteville and the heat farms, which is in Ditchford, of some other significant grid funding sources that we'll be pursuing too, but based on the scale of our project, I'm not sure that we would necessarily qualify, I just don't have enough information on those yet.
Have you ever considered talking to the folks that run the home of our own facility? That they may know of avenues for, since they have
No, yeah.
Inhabited or.
I'll talk to Mary Ann and Bill.
Yeah, that they might know some grant you can apply, and probably perhaps some of those residents would be the ones most likely to use that on a regular basis, perhaps.
Perhaps, yes, I mean, I think some of their money probably came from HUD too, so that's where Platteville, the majority of their funding, one point nine million out of thirty-two point six million came from HUD.
Yeah, the omakens may know resources for you.
Okay.
If that's a motion for you, Chuck, without financial commitment, I'll second that.
So just to be clear, your motion is to support the New Glares cares grant writing process without a financial commitment from the village? Or do you wanna restate your motion?
I guess, I guess that's bluntly.
Or I just, I just wanna make sure I get it correct, so if you wanna restate it.
No, I agree with you.
Hard, but yeah.
You can, at this time.
Guarantee, how about guarantee a financial commitment? You're saying that you want to support the project, but you just can't guarantee any funds at this time until you've gone through your budget process.
But, but I don't guarantee is.
Right. Exactly.
Yeah, I wanna put that in the
And I'll second that.
Gonna put that into my motion. So. Your job, Kelsey, in case you haven't figured it out, is to make us look good.
No comment on that.
And it's a tough.
Okay, I'm just gonna read this back before I move on. Okay. Motion to support New Glares cares grant writing process without any guaranteed financial commitment. Is there anything I should add, subtract? Elaborate?
I think that's it. And that works for you.
That's perfect, I'm good with that.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Very none, all the favors say aye.
Right.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Shelley. You're welcome.
Yeah.
New business, consideration discussion water reservoir project on page twenty-six. We have someone here to skip to that.
You can.
And the recording. Step up to the table.
Do you mean? Just for point of reference, I'm Brian, Atomic Engineering, and we'll be tonight at game bars. She's our partner firm, as well as our drinking water and funding lead, and a lot of this has to do with drinking water and funding. Yeah. The Lauren's memo, and then our following handout kinda cover what we were hoping to get in front of the group tonight. We were last here for the preliminary engineering contract. We're at a point now where we've, we're getting to the end of that budget and getting ready to make final engineering decisions. So in preparation, preparation for presenting a final engineering contract, probably your next meeting, one big outstanding thing is how you want us to handle your control system for your water system, which is SCADA supervisory control and data acquisition, those are the catchy acronym there, but it, it's how your system controls itself. When the tank gets low, it calls for water from one of your three wells. When the tank gets full, it turns those wells off. Sometimes some wells are down for maintenance, or because they've got a wobble or something like that, it controls all of that, so Joe and his guys don't have to be here on the clock. The booster station, which is up, up by the tank itself, pressures get low down there, it turns those pumps on, those sorts of things. The, the devices themselves are fairly old, if you had a chance to go through the, the handout, Lauren asked us to help lay out some very rough costs, as she's preparing your capital plan, looking five and ten years ahead. I, one common theme in, in your current booster station, the well number one, which is right down the hall, well number two, well number three, they're all fairly old.
I'm fairly old, what does that mean?
You were probably born in nineteen eighty-six then.
Yeah, in the way.
That's, that's your youngest thing.
Forty years.
Well, the building is forty years old, that your well three, the well itself is way older than that.
Yeah.
Way older than that. Your booster station is mid-seventies, my age. And, and the staff isn't a great job of keeping them together, but if you have gone through them, in addition to what we're talking about tonight, the control systems, the, the facilities themselves are getting pretty tired, and separate from tonight, as you guys are working on your CIP, I do think one of those, your booster station, your well two house, or your well three house, really should get some discussion at that CIP set, set of meetings because of their age, that's not for tonight. Partly because of their age, their control systems are of a style and vintage that are no longer manufactured. They work via radio waves, which is great reliable technology, the rub is if you have a lightning hit, or a voltage surge, or a curious squirrel breaks something, those, you can't go to, you can't buy them, so quite literally, systems go on eBay to see if they can get parts to keep the system talking. We're not using those old systems for the, for the new reservoir, we're already planning on new digital communications for that, and that'll talk with your control panel now. What we wanted to get in front of you all was what to do with everything else, while we're here, we do have a contractor who's gonna be working on your controls, you do have some funding to offset the whole project, dollars from Senator Baldwin. And.
And dollars from?
Senator Baldwin, the, the village received an earmark
Okay.
of a million dollars for this project.
Okay.
So while you have that in the area.
Is that the same million that we're using up against the water?
Yep. Yes.
So it's not two million?
No, it's one, one singular million.
It's already spent.
It is.
Yeah.
It is.
Okay.
But you do have four other things that have old controls, we are gonna be working on your controls, at least to incorporate the new tank. Because of their age, just the controls themselves, not the structures, because of their age, we, we do recommend that you in fact do replace those controls, because you cannot find spare parts, however, that costs extra money. All in to replace your system as it currently exists to modern digital communications, which would be approximately two hundred fifty thousand dollars above and beyond what, what we've been presenting in the past for just the tank. That's a chunk of money. The.
What happens if we didn't do all of them, and kept the old machine for parts for the other one?
You read my mind. In the theme of that, you know, once you work on your CIP.
What does that mean again?
A capital improvement plan, your long range projects, once you work on that, again, we, we would really recommend picking at least one of these to do. If, if you're gonna, I'm gonna just pick on the booster station, say, as part of your CIP, you do decide to recondition your booster station, then we would say, don't touch those controls. Let's leave them for now, because you're gonna be coming. But we can replace the other sites, because those are likely ten years away, and they're much more likely to break. We can take those pieces, put them on your shelf, and they become your spare parts, so that at two in the morning, when something happens, you're not on eBay, you go grab it and you plug it in, so very much, we would recommend that, that would drop this two fifty, because we won't, we wouldn't be replacing the controls anywhere else, if you're gonna be doing that, so.
Drop the two fifty to what?
About twenty-five thousand per site. So if the community wanted to
Oh, anticipated twenty, this is recommended improvements, this is line three, twenty-five thousand per site?
Yes, yes, sir. Yep. So, we don't necessarily need you to, and probably would recommend you don't declare tonight, we wanna replace the booster in twenty twenty-seven, or we wanna replace wellhouse three in twenty twenty-nine. Well, selfishly, I'd like to come back at a subsequent meeting with a final engineering proposal, and I just would like to get some reactions from the group. Does this sound like it's a logical idea to attack the, the older control panels? Or you want us to do absolutely the least amount possible? For the other sites, it's not gonna impact how we do the thing, thanks to the, but this would be if you wanna call it an opportunity, it'd be a, a chance to address some of those other sites that are probably not gonna get touched for five to ten years.
So. I feel like I have the deja vu all year, but I thought, I thought I asked this the last time we met, these things could be covered by rate increases? With, now, with approval of the PSC or?
Yes, and yes, so the, the project itself, the tank, the reservoir, is gonna be funded for sure by that single million dollar earmark. And then by some sort. And then by some sort of debt. Uh, the water utility, we're, we're helping pursue safe drinking water funds for DNR. Um, that. Could be used, um. You could also pursue private debt, you know, sell revenue bonds. But either way, you're going to have a, a loan for that reservoir. That debt service will have to be paid by a rate. So to. Also get out, make sure everybody's on the same page. A hundred percent guarantee you will need a rate increase to pay for the reservoir project.
Right, so, but I, I guess I. I guess I was, uh, under the, the statement of expression that we couldn't do that.
Oh, because.
So I, I don't know, but, um, so. So this would not be. A, a tax levy item, it would be a rating.
Could be a rating.
Okay, okay.
Yes, uh. Another leg of your five-legged financial stool here is your impact fees. And that's when I first started meeting with this group back during COVID, uh, and you were looking at. Your impact fees. Those. Can only be used to fund growth-related. Water infrastructure. Uh, your rates can absolutely be used for, to replace old stuff. That's, PSC loves that, that's the. That's what they want to see, using, raising your rates to replace old stuff.
Who can't raise a race to build new stuff? Is that what you're saying?
Not oversized new stuff.
Well, why would we build oversized?
Undersize. Less than what.
Oldy lock size.
If they have projected growth, you can raise, you can. Take on debt to build buildings to. Need the means for that growth.
Debt, debt, uh, but, uh. Hey, through tax levy or through rate increases?
Through rate increases.
Okay, so, and, and how do we? How do we, uh, certainly? Predicted growth, is there a? A formula, um?
Well, for instance, the, the, the reservoir is. Needing an existing deficiency that you have, where you don't have enough in storage to be able to supply the whole village for a whole day. Um, but it, because, because it doesn't make sense to build a tank just that size of what you need right now. You size it for reasonable future growth, and that's where that impact fee percentage came in. I think how much of that tank should be charged for future users versus how much should be.
Okay, and how? How is that? Determined, I mean, do we just say, well, we think we're going to have twenty percent or? Does, does somebody, do we have to have proof?
Um, well, what, what we did when, um, we were looking at that beginning of the impact fee discussion is. Look at the potential areas of growth that have been identified in your comprehensive plan. And, um, developments that had been considered in the past and were possible to go forward. And then how many lots that would be, how many residences that would be.
So like that, so.
Yes, that's really what, what drove the, the growth projections, where those two big potential developments. And then some other pockets of infill. Within the village limits were just outside.
And what a, what a, uh, uh. Stay, I don't know what. Is a, a potential, but, um. Somewhat, um. Also put a stagnant. Um, potential development such as the, the, uh, property on, uh, highway thirty-nine. Which has been. Quoted as a, I believe. Uh, would that be include? Could be included.
You should tell.
As to our benefit.
That was included in the projections and sizing, um, I mean, the sizing was also based on what you would need for fire. But, um, the impact fee. That you would be, so you, you have an existing impact fee, you would be revising that to include the new reservoir. And allocating a certain amount of cost to the reservoir is an impact fee. And then if that development, the other development took off. Every connection there would pay that.
But they're all part of the form.
Yeah. I, if I'm not.
Are you?
What you're.
Yeah, yeah, I think you are. Okay. Have we not already applied for rate increase? Yes, he.
You have.
Yes. Uh, yeah, so that will be, new rates will go into effect later this month. We're going to have to apply for another one as part of this. To update them again for the water reservoir. Yeah.
So, um, I guess to recap. We would recommend tonight. That the village, uh. Either consent or not consent with us including a full replacement of your SCADA. That'd be an additional two hundred fifty thousand to the project for construction. And then at some point in the semi-near future, while you're working on your CIP. You'd be able to decide, well, hey, you know what? We're going to be doing the booster station anyway, but so that we would just not, not build that thing. So then, that you wouldn't. You wouldn't pay for that thing.
Your, your third bullet, your, your recommended improvements, your third bullet point. If I'm reading correctly. There's no money, leave sites as is, in other words, don't spend any money.
If you're going to be upgrading something in the next few years, yes.
Okay, so if we did those now, what would they be?
Twenty-five thousand, and that's inclusive. In that two hundred.
Okay, leave sites, plural, how many is that?
It'd be five.
Whichever ones you. Thought you might upgrade the whole facility in the next five years. Like, if you said we were going to do booster station and well two in the next five years, and we realize that's, that's a big chunk. Then we would take those two sites out of the SCADA.
Isn't that something we ask you to do, is tell us which two sites we're taking out? As opposed to me, who I don't know nothing.
Yeah, we would. We would recommend. Since we're getting there, um, we would recommend you, you tackle at least one of. The four sites. In the next five years, it's not for decision tonight. But as your water system engineer, we, we have toured all those facilities. They are. They're in tough shape.
Okay, so, so go back to your capital improvement underline at the top.
Yes, sir.
Replace booster station. That's one you're recommending we do now?
Nope, um, I'm sorry, let me back up then. So the, the capital improvement planning. That is really intended more to highlight. The sites that you have. And the rough ages and the approximate costs that you may encounter if you do decide. To re, recondition that site, so if you decided to replace the booster station. We have.
This is the, this is the five-year plan is the.
Any of these could be in your five-year plan, at least one of them, so please say, if you, if you can somehow stomach two. Uh, that'd be awesome, but, uh, probably not this fully possible. Um, then down at the bottom, the SCADA improvements is a, is a different discussion, that's what we're talking about tonight.
What's SCADA?
It's a, it's the system that controls all of your wells and your tanks and your boosters.
Oh, what is, who's the actual, uh?
Supervisory, control. Supervisory, control. And data acquisition. I wish I could have come up with a better one, but that's.
Oh, that's fine. Just one of those.
And it's, it's essentially a system of computers and radios. That talk to each other so that. Well two knows what's happening at well three, and Joe knows what's happening at the booster, and all of that can happen automatically.
So under current system, you're recommending. Um, upgrading.
Yeah, the current system bullets there, that is just describing what you have right now.
Okay.
The, the next set of bullets. Is, is what we would recommend.
So you're recommending the whole package, two fifty?
I'm recommending the whole package tonight, and if, if in the near future you decide that. We are going to in fact improve well two. In the next five years, then we would. We would not replace that SCADA because you're going to be. Gut, gutting out a whole new wellhouse at well two in that scenario. And you, you, it wouldn't make any sense to replace well two's. Radios today, since you're going to be there in. Zero to five years anyway.
Um, I'm sorry to be so stupid, but I'm getting these variables about. Maybe yes, and hold that, I can't make those correlate with recommended improvements.
Okay, so the, um.
New radio, new radios, how much is that?
That, that is about fifty thousand dollars.
Okay.
You're going to have to do that anyway. That's just for the.
That's the, number one bullet point is for sure, then next one?
Next one. Uh, it would be. Twenty-five thousand per site.
Right, but how many are we, actually, we've got five sites, right?
You got four, five sites, it's the. Well one, well two, well three, booster and your master.
Right.
Um, the master also has about a fifty thousand dollar. Uh, upgrade, because that's the, that's the brains of the whole system. So that'd be five times twenty-five, a hundred twenty-five plus fifty, so that second bullet item would be one seventy-five. That would be extra.
Wait, you mean the third, uh? With, uh, second bullet point was radios and master. Am I correct? Fifty thousand dollars?
Fifty thousand for the master.
Yeah.
And twenty.
And twenty, fifty thousand for the master and twenty-five thousand. I'm sorry, I, I got you.
And then that number would go down if some of these sites. Are going to be touched in the next few years, that's that third bullet. So if, if you do.
Tell me what some means.
Uh, if, if it's more than zero. If you're gonna, if, if the outcome of your CIP process is, you know what, folks, we, we don't have it, we don't have the money. We're going to have to duct tape these together, which we, we don't recommend that.
I'm, I'm sorry, but. Oh, oh, CIP is part of our. Tax levy project, tax levy. You know?
No, so the CIP, and maybe in the past, it hasn't included utilities, but CIP is encompassing of tax levy projects and utility projects. We're planning five years.
So the capital improvement project could. Encompass any of the.
Exactly. And I really wanted to include that in our plan, yeah.
So if, if it's zero. If, if you all make the executive decision that we, we can't, we cannot include any water sites. Then, then it becomes even more important to replace the controls now. If however, you're amenable to picking one of those sites and saying, yes, we're gonna. Easy some concept, we're gonna try to get to wellhouse number three in the next five years. Then in twenty-twenty-four. Amy and I are not going to replace the SCADA at well number three, because you've already told us, well, we're, we're going to be there in three years anyway.
And it would reduce the cost by twenty-five thousand, so you're using one site.
Sorry to be dense, I'm looking for you to say. When you say, we don't know if we're going to replace any one of, I don't know what that means, I don't know which one is any one of.
So that would be. Any of these top.
Yeah, I know, but I want you to tell me which is which.
Your booster station is the worst.
Okay.
The, the boost.
Okay, so, so that's, that's what we're going to do. What are, what are well two, well three upgrades?
Those are. Sequestering your chemicals, right now you have fluoride and chlorine that, you know, you add, they're very corrosive. Um, both to your electronics and to just the steel piping. Those areas, modern code, and this has been on your regular DNR inspections, modern code is. You have a separate room, a separate heating for those chemicals. Totally separate from here, so that's, both of those would involve. Almost a tear down of the house itself. And a rebuild of the house itself. Uh, the hole in the ground is fine.
For any of the houses?
Two or three, uh, well number one.
And they're all.
They're, they're both equally crumbing.
No.
No.
Two is twice as bad.
Two is twice, so. They're probably in.
Oh, they're that old, old, tan brick building. Oh, under, oh, under.
Do I know where this one is? Probably.
Both are about two million. Uh. So they're big, big numbers.
If we look at this. And we went with.
We just.
I knew it was. Your recommended improvements, which would be two fifty, and your recommendation that. The, the most important to look at for capital improvement. Uh, planning would be the booster station, we're probably looking at. Two million, if we were going to do the replacement, because you think this is, I mean, if we were going to go with this, which is, seems almost necessary. Um, this replacing of this booster station, would you? Do you feel like this is the number one priority? Besides these wells, if you were going to go, I mean.
Joe's probably staring daggers at me, I didn't ask Joe what his number one was, uh, the booster station has been identified in. Your water systems needs for. Twenty years ago, it was identified as, yikes, this thing's in rough shape, um, they're all in rough shape. I. I guess I'd encourage the group to not pick one of these tonight because it's a very detailed decision.
Okay.
And the money. You know, these are two million dollar.
Yeah.
Things. That's, that's, even if you told me, Brian, let's replace that booster station, that'd be. Three years from now?
Okay.
To act, I mean, so it, for tonight. I was just.
Would be.
And admittedly selfishly, so I can come back to you with a, a final engineering. Proposal, I just want to know what, what you want me to design and Amy to design in twenty.
Okay, so let me go another way, if we told you we don't want to spend more than two hundred fifty thousand dollars, does that get you where you want to get?
Yes.
Good. We don't want to spend more than two hundred fifty thousand dollars.
I can live with that.
Makes sense, I think my, one of my concerns is, I think we should do the whole system because we had an issue last summer where. Well, we found out what that cost. Yeah, but. The system is old. And then we found out, but you went to. How many weeks?
What's?
How long did you have to come in and start?
What, what system are we talking about here?
Okay, so the system that we're running on right now, SCADA system that we were on.
Yeah.
Last spring. It stopped talking. Where nothing was talking to the master control panel and the utilities shot. We went hours. All of a sudden turns back on. Okay. We have no idea. It shuts off again. Be like, almost at the exact same time. We're thinking that there's a frequency because it runs off, where's it go?
I remember that, you told me all about that.
Okay, so we thought it was a frequency issue. Because of a turn on or shut off and also turn off. So in the meantime of that, you have wells that are being run manually. People that are doing overtime to come in to check where the reservoirs are. Make sure that there is a constant reservoir. Um. It's, it's a lot of hours, and I mean, a ton of hours, and let's say if we're on call and we're paying lineman. Forty-four dollars an hour to be in here, and they put in an extra in there, we got a call, extra ten, twenty hours. It's a lot of overtime plus the regular time pay. So. We thought it was a frequency issue, we spent some money on it, we talked to Brian and Amy about what could we do to change this right away? This is where the SCADA system kind of initiated, where do we need to upgrade this one right now? What's been caused? And. I'm going to find out, it was a wire between. The booster station. And. The tower. When they went up there and started investigating a little bit more. A bunch of water came out of the pipe. And when they replaced the wire about ten feet into the pipe. The wires were completely bare, so they were working. We replaced the wire. We now have wire on standby, if that were to happen again. But that's years, we're talking. When was that tower put in to when the booster was put in, in the early seventies? Some wires been in the ground for. You know, since that SCADA system, I suppose, online, so you're talking years. Well, it's working, we have not had a flaw in it, we haven't had anything with it. So. I get it, but I hate to say this in the, in, in a term of, this is what's happened, but. Would we don't do anything for twenty years or more to a water system? Would we don't do anything for twenty years or more to a water system? You failed. And now you're out. Say that again. If you don't do anything with your water system in twenty plus years, you already failed. You're talking twenty or something now, or? Twenty years ago. Ago, absolutely. And then you need to keep looking at your your structures. Or you're falling that far behind, where now you have a lift here. Uh, all those areas, the booster station, well two, well three. That are. There right now, like, hey, we should really be doing one of these here. Work to take that job, and we financially can't do that. I think the current. There you go. So.
I think. Yeah, all I was looking for tonight is, is that seem reasonable to to add two fifty to the tank project? And if yes, then we'll continue that one on, and then be happy to support the discussions at the C I P.
Well, do we have a lot of choice?
Yeah, that's right, how can we not?
Um, is is we're now up to um. Two point oh five, aren't we?
After the million dollar grant, yeah.
Right, so does that include your fees?
Yep.
Those, okay. Oh, we're not making a.
Yeah, next steps of. Yeah, I I then we'd come back, either next meeting or following with the final design proposal, give you the particulars of that. Um, and then parallel with that, you'll all be starting and waiting into your C I P discussions. And we'd be happy to support you through those and and prioritize these.
Uh, but. Once we got, um. Our installation on the hill. Could we run the whole town just on that while you replace the the old ones?
Uh, you certainly could, uh, the good news is your reservoir, reservoir number one, as it's gonna be called. That's in fine shape, you don't need to replace reservoir one.
As reservoir one up here, the one we just spent a hundred ninety thousand dollars.
The system could run in it for a limited amount of time on either one independently.
What does that mean, limited amount of time, hours, days, months?
A year.
Okay, okay. And then what happens if we lose a well?
Like, it's a little sticky, um, if you lost a well today. And had a fire, something would burn down, you wouldn't have enough water to fight it, um. It also depends which well, this well kicked out. Man, not a big deal, but uh it it's just not as important of a well, it's smaller, shorter. Shallower, I should say, um, so those are, those are big deals also.
You know, it's a perfect point that people. Uh, uh, you know, they think about their tap water, take a shower, flush the toilet. Fire suppression is a big thing, and if we have a major, and we, we do have. I guess some kind of algorithms, since they.
Yeah, that's what we walked through.
It it, you know, it couldn't.
Yeah.
Anyway, um.
Yeah, those are definitely important decisions and discussions, but not necessary tonight, I more wanted to get some guidance on the two fifty. And if.
For the, we need a motion.
Contactor.
And then we'd come back for a actionable.
Yeah, I think Lauren would like a motion though. See, I think Lauren would like a motion, say, to add the two. So would somebody like to make one, just move this?
Yeah, I'll I'll make a motion that we add the SCADA SCADA improvements for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the, um. To our operation.
I'm not saying, yeah.
Any further discussion?
What the L T?
So the SCADA is the radio.
Communication.
Those three things.
Yeah, and then the, there's.
I mean, if it's fifteen years from now, you would.
All right, okay, we have motion, second all in favor say aye. Opposed, Nelson carries.
Thank you for. Being patient with us.
Sometime in October then.
You got it.
Okay. Item B, consideration discussion, Green County Highway Department application for land division certified survey max E S M W six one seven seven state highway. Now, you gotta speak to this, Lauren.
Yeah, then you might be guaranteeing deja vu, this is the exact same application that came before you at the last meeting. Um, after further clarification with our kind of, you know, our code and how E T Z works. We technically do not have flat review jurisdiction on properties that are outside of that E T Z jurisdiction. It's in the one and a half mile, but it's not in the E T Z, or it's. Past the one and a half map, or no, but then, sorry, getting those mixed up, basically, um, the conditions that were placed. Uh, last meeting should be suggestions, not conditions, because. By placing them as conditions, we're at, we're superseding the town who actually has your flat review jurisdiction. So what I'm asking for tonight is for you to, um. I guess amend the previous motion and to change it from conditions to suggestions.
So is that what Mark?
Yeah, yeah, that's why he.
No words like Mike Marty would.
Yeah, 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 so, um, Mike's motion was good, but it it needed to be suggested, not a condition.
So that's what this was.
Correct, that's what Mark had recommended, and if you look back at the minutes on page three, you can see subject to the following conditions. And that's the part subject to the following conditions.
They're gonna build there is the new. The township hall is further out on thirty nine. That's why I was confused, yeah, they're both on thirty nine.
So this is Mark's. What you're asking for is Mark's recommendation.
Well, I clarified with Mark that we could not make conditions on the plat, we can only make suggestions.
But Mark wasn't agreement.
Correct, yeah, so are we motioning to approve Mark's suggestions, okay?
That's what you want, right?
It it's whatever you want, you could also make Mike Marty's motion last meeting as the suggestions, or you can. Go with uh Mark Rockers, it's it's up to you.
This is in writing.
Yes, uh, Mike's uh motion is in writing in the minutes of last day three, if he wanted to.
What's the easiest way to do this?
Uh, I guess I would clarify that Mike's motion is more in depth, so if you want the more in depth motion, then I would. Use that one as the suggestion, if you're just fine with Mark Rocker's suggestion, then you can just move that. But if you're approving Mike Marty's, you need to approve it with the amendment of changing conditions to suggestions.
That's my motion, it's changed like Marty.
Is that, is that a motion? And that's a second.
So the motion is to amend the previous motion by Mike Marty from conditions to suggestions.
Jay, all in favor say aye. Item C, consideration discussion, Green County tax collection agreement.
Yeah, so, um, this is something we do every year, nothing has really changed this year outside of postage costs. Um, the bigger thing that I really wanted to get the board's opinion on is, this is something we do every single year, and. Um, frankly, I'm I'm not entirely sure that the board is even interested in having this come to the board level every single year, I don't know if that's. Most efficient way to handle this, um, speaking of consistency, we have other contracts that the staff. Signs without board approval, and then we have some contracts that come to the board, um, so that may, for, you know. Designate a a bigger discussion in the future, but I guess I would like direction on this specific agreement, the top tax collection agreement with the county. Is this something the board wants and needs to see every year, or are you comfortable with staff making the decision to agree? And obviously, if there were something that changed in this contract, that we did not feel comfortable approving, we'd bring it.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, I need a motion to approve this, because we did bring it to you this year, but your guidance will give me information for next year that I do not need to bring it unless there's. If, yeah, if you'd like, yeah. Somebody needs to make a motion, yeah.
Is there, is there a?
That page thirty nine is the tax collection agreement.
Yeah.
There's no resolution.
So do you need a resolution or?
No, I just need a an a motion to approve the tax collection agreement as presented.
Okay.
And then.
I will move that we approve the tax collection agreement as presented.
And then you can also include, if you choose, that this does not need to come. Okay.
He all in favor say aye.
And then the next motion is you don't have to come back.
You're making that motion go.
Uh, unless there's a change in the agreement.
To approve.
Authority.
Not just next year, until.
Tax collection. Agreements barring large changes.
All in favor say aye. Uh, item B, consideration because fourth avenue storm water project.
All right. Um, so I actually passed out an updated memo on this, um, with something more concrete. Um, so. Joe and I have been talking with our village engineer, Pat Ray, about some needed stormwater improvement on Fourth Avenue. Um, you may or may not be aware that, you know, when it, we get heavy rain. Stormwater travels north on Sixth Street down that hill, and then goes through people's yards. Uh, between Fourth and Third Avenue, um, Joe, feel free to hop in if I'm saying incorrectly here. So.
Or it comes down and goes, goes in my driveway.
Yeah.
Down the sidewalk.
So we've been.
So we're talking that area.
So we've been exploring, and Pat Rank has been drawing up, basically getting, putting in a kind of a. Half basin, and then a pipe that would lead from Fourth Ave to Third Ave, where we're currently, well, we have already installed new stormwater.
Would this be behind you or this? The west side.
Yeah, through there.
Okay.
Um, and we can add it on to our Third Avenue project at a pretty good deal. Instead of, you know, bidding it out on a future time, we get a really good deal if we just add it on to this contract, and. Madrelha said they would be willing to, and and gave us some estimates, which is.
We're using these escrow funds or these surplus funds?
Correct, so that's my next, so, um, the total project cost is a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Um, so that includes around sixty thousand forcearm rod improvements, forty thousand. So as part of this, um, we've talked about how the house to the west of Roger is gonna be demolished. Um, so we'd actually get that road straightened out as part of this project too, which would be great, um, so that would be part of the street improvements. Um, about twenty thousand for injury, or injuries, engineering, and then ten thousand for contingency. Um, so there's, there's several ways that we could fund this, and we're still working through. Kind of exactly what that would look like, but I wanted to provide you some options, so, um, we could fund the entire stormwater portion. Seventy eight thousand, and that seventy eight includes the stormwater sixty, as well as engineering and the contingency, I broke those out. We have stormwater surplus funds currently, uh, about three hundred and thirty six thousand. Um, that we could use towards this project, now that, that fund is used to pay towards debt payments, um, I worked with Beth and. She said that we had enough funds to to pay for the seventy eight thousand for stormwater. I think it makes sense to come out of that account, because we don't wanna use general fund to pay for something that's a stormwater project. Otherwise, the general fund is basically.
It would be a loan.
It would be a loan to stormwater, so we we wanna kinda keep those separate, so. Um, that's where I I think the stormwater surplus would be the ideal funding source for that, now the general fund could. Be broken up in a couple different ways, um, I have here general fund surplus. As a possible option, we currently have about five hundred and ninety thousand in our unassigned general fund. Um, so we have a good amount of money, um, that could, you know, easily fund this, there's a couple other options. Um, Kelsey uh reminded me that we have a street sinking fund about twenty eight thousand dollars, so we could use a portion of that funds. Um, I also mentioned in the memo that we do have contingency funds for the Third Avenue project. Um, a portion of those are already spoken for, and so I didn't wanna. Necessarily allocate those yet, but that could be towards the end of Third Avenue, if we're like feeling good, and we have enough contingency, we could just use that instead of the surplus. So, we have funding options. Um, and I know this is a very kind of sudden thing that's unbudgeted, but I really wanted to get this to your attention as soon as possible, because. It's all mid September, I wanna get this added to the project ASAP to get it done this fall.
So is this your preference?
That is, well, my preference would be to use contingency, but I don't know if we'll have it, the contingency, but this is a good. Option for us, I think what we're more so looking for is just the board to say, yes, we wanna add it, and we trust the staff to.
Can I ask this, Lauren, um? I I'm trying to picture where it's at, are we getting the deal because the road is already tore up?
We're getting the deal, they're already in the area, and they can just add it.
They can just add it, okay, so they can, okay. Yeah, I don't see why, I I I guess I agree, I think we should move forward on that, and allow the. The staff to make the best uh financial investment for financial borrowing decisions, because you know, best where to take the money from.
I do believe, I just wanna have one note on that, I do believe that if, as a as a staff, we decide that we wanna use some or. All of the sinking fund, um, per our current policy, the board has to approve sinking fund use, so I think we would have to come back to the board. If we chose to go down that route, um, which we definitely could.
Yeah.
But I think just tonight, your approval to go ahead and add it into the project, and basically, we'll figure out funding.
And how much does, how much time does that add to the timeframe that they already gave us, is it an additional two weeks or?
Yeah, Joe, you know, I'm.
How long it take to put that, I don't think it'd take a week, would it?
No, probably, if we get it all okay, stuff like that, if they get the, if they would get the material here, it might take three days.
So, you, are they adding a retention pond and then a, and then a PVC pond, no?
No, so all it, all it's gonna do is beat inlets in your curb.
Oh, so that's what.
It'll be inlets there with piping, one main pipe that'll go from up by Roger's house, all the way down to the new pipe. Down on uh Fourth Avenue.
I get it, okay. Yeah, I mean, did.
Otherwise, i- i- if we don't go to Fourth Avenue. You, yeah, I'm sorry. If we don't go to uh Third Avenue, the north. We have to bring it all the way down here to the fire station? That's not even feasible.
Yeah.
Or we have to take it all the way. Or we have to take it all the way, uh, to the west and it will not flow the west, so our best bet is to go straight up.
Okay, I get it now.
I, I see you're removing two trees. Have you told Nancy?
They're gone.
Oh, they're already gone, huh?
They were gone, that's why she was.
Alright, so this is an old groin.
Yeah.
Right now, any water that comes down starts back way past gifts, there's little rides in the road going back to Coliseum, so that comes this way. Comes down Sixth Street and then goes all the way down Fourth, around the corner on Fourth, drops in an inlet down on Fifth Street.
I get it.
Yeah, yeah, goes into my lot.
Yeah, and that's a bad intersection when we, we saw that pretty heavy.
One thing I want to add, this whole project is contingent upon that property owner demolishing right their house. So if that falls through, this whole thing falls through. So just an FYI, that could happen.
Are you in contact?
I am in contact with him. Um, I have not gotten an estimated date on when he's demolishing. I assume soon because he was very antsy about getting the project done, so. People permits, so.
So I moved to add the Fourth Avenue Storm Water Project to the current Third Avenue.
Total one fourteen, you said?
One thirty.
One thirty. Okay, I'll second that.
Okay, any further discussion? If you know, say aye.
Aye.
Both most carries. Uh, personnel and finance, considering some special employee handbook. Look at that, employee personnel handbook, Chris. Revisions.
All right.
Must be getting late.
I know. Alright. So, I have a memo, which actually starts, oh. How that happened. Um, okay, so there's a memo before the draft provisions that kind of outline the revisions that staff have been discussing. Um, this actually did go before the Finance Personnel Committee back in June. Um, took me a while to get this back here. Um, so I'll just quickly go through the kind of four major revisions that we're looking to ask with the Personnel Handbook. So the first one is, uh, Village Hall Closure for Incliment Weather. Um, this has been in discussion since COVID and we, and staff have gotten the capability of working remotely. Um, so we've closed Village Hall, I think once or twice this past year for Incliment Weather, so like a really bad snowstorm because we have a lot of staff that drive, you know, many miles away um, and have the ability to work from home. But we didn't really have a policy that actually allowed us to do that, and so I wanted to get that included in, uh, the Personnel Handbook. Um, so this would allow, um, me, the village administrator, to close Village Hall in conjunction with the library because the library will also close for Incliment Weather, and so we've worked together to, um, make that decision. Um, however, there are employees that are not able to work from home, uh, namely our uh, wonderful public work staff who do our snow plowing. Um, and so we would recommend also adding one personal day per year for those staff um, to kind of compensate them for the fact that they can't work from home. Um, obviously, working from home doesn't mean that it's a personal day, you're still working, um, but giving that flexibility to our staff who can is kind of unfair to those who have to come in regardless, and so that was kind of a way to um, compensate them. So that's the first proposed revision. Uh, second one, accumulated vacation payout after resignation. Kelsey, can you explain this one? Thank you. So currently, um, currently when we do payroll and when we, um, at the beginning of every year when our employees start off with their vacation, every time, at the beginning of every month, every first payroll, we accrue certain hours of vacation. So for example, you would accrue ten hours of vacation at the beginning of March. When you accrue that ten hours of vacation at the beginning of March, you're also accruing hours for next year. I'm not sure when this policy started. I'm not sure why this policy started. I've never heard of such a thing where this only ever benefits somebody if they leave. So for example, right now, if I would leave, I would get paid out for the vacation that I have accrued, I have been awarded this year, for this year, and then also accrued for next year. Very, very strange. Um, I will reiterate, I have never, ever heard of such a thing. And to be perfectly honest, it's a pain in the tush to track for my office, so I just think we should get rid of it. Yes.
Can't imagine how this ever.
I, I have, I have one theory which goes into another, um, policy change in here to maybe help offset it, but I still think it makes any sense, so. So the, the revisions that I'm proposing is just eliminate any reference to, in the handbook, they call it accumulated vacation.
You, you've got several issues coming up. You want to load it under one motion?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. Um, so yeah, I, I've fricking, uh, every reference to accumulated vacation. Um, so when employees leave, they're getting paid out for their unused vacation, not accumulated. So unused would be like I have two weeks in the bank that I can use at any time. That would be my unused vacation, which I've earned, not in the future I'm earning. So, that is that one. Okay, moving on. Number three is reimbursement of benefits. This is a very odd one. So if an employee's last day is, I have an example of May fifteenth, they have to pay back the village for their health and dental insurance, May sixteen through thirty-one. This is very unusual. Employers don't do this. We usually pay for the entire month of an employee. Um.
Big dollars.
Yeah, so, but I will say this, when I talked about the last moving up, you didn't, but this is an even bigger because a lot of our salaries are broken down as golf clubs fifteen different ways, so when somebody leaves, we have to then make sure that what they're paying back is broken down for that exact amount of days, for that exact amount of cost to all the funds that their salary and benefits initially came out of.
The price tag on figuring that number out is.
Yes, it causes problems, it, it's confusing, and what I was alluding to with the accumulated vacation, I'm wondering if way back in when, when this was implemented, that they implemented paying back benefits and then they also. Yes, it does. Okay, alright, the third or the fourth and final revision is vacation. Might generate the most, uh, discussion, um, but I think is a really important thing to look at because vacation is an important recruitment and retention tool for our staff here at the village. We may not always be able to afford huge pay increases, but we can afford to give more vacation and that is an incentive for employees. So I did include some information on what other communities around us are providing um, for vacation as well as regular holidays and floating holidays. Um, you might notice that we are a little low compared to other communities. Not all of them, we're pretty similar to Belleville. Um, but I think, uh, this is a really great way to keep our employees and again, recruit new employees. So I've come up with a new system for vacation. Um, so it is a calendar accrual system, so January one, they would accrue these vacation days for the full year. Um, this is especially great for new employees. Right now, they only earn three and a half hours per month. Um, this system would give them vacation upfront, so if they start um, at the village before July first, they would earn ten days upfront. And then, um, it has it set up where if they start after June thirtieth, then they would only get half of that five days, so they're not, you know, starting December one and getting ten days and then again on January one, getting another ten days. Um, so this would definitely make us more competitive with vacation, so as I said, if you, you start with ten days, once they get to one year of service, they'll get fifteen days, five years, twenty days, et cetera. Um, if you look at the actual policy, I have included a couple of other, um, provisions, so one being that upon recommendation from village administrator, the approval, approval of the village for newly hired employees could be put at a higher, um, years of service. So for example, if we're hiring someone who has thirty years of experience in the field, we're probably not going to put them at the new employee rate because they'll be like, no, thank you, I'll go somewhere else, um, you know, because they're probably leaving a job that they have, I don't know, twenty days of vacation or something. So that will give us the ability to still be competitive and put them at a higher, um, year of service. And then they would just continue from there, so like if slotted someone at the five years, they're at the five years, so that means after they're, they work another five years, they would be at the ten year, um, so it just slots them into whatever kind of year of service. Um, hope that makes sense. I think a calendar accrual is, um, a great way to do it because it's just uh, you cannot only have to do it one time a year. January one, you give everyone what vacation they're owed. Um, it's not having to deal with the, like, new employees doing the three and a half hour per month and keeping track of that. Um, yeah, any questions about any of those?
Well, I know at the school district, sometimes it's hard to place. Maybe teachers are more complicated because they have different degrees and different, uh, years of experience. Uh, but we kind of have a grid like this, but we also have where the superintendent can decide because of unusual qualifications or, uh, uh, really tough area where to get someone.
Yep.
Because that you, the village administrator would have the power to place them or that, that the administrator feel is appropriate for that situation for that.
And then we just do that with the police officers.
The police do this one. Yeah, we do years of service with the police. Yeah, so yeah, and that's, that's exactly what this would do. It would allow, so our staff is familiar with that.
Yeah.
Being part of the police.
I got another question. The only thing I was going to point out too with Belleville, we've got nine holidays, they just got two more.
Oh, yeah. Okay. Yeah.
Well, they don't get it based on years of service because the new guy we hired gets some senior experience when we started.
But we, we brought in police officers though at specific years of service, like I think Hunter was brought in, he was credited two, two or three years of service, is that accurate? Yeah.
So it'd be similar.
Right, so like after he's been here, if he got credited three years after his two-year anniversary here, he would technically be at the five-year service level. Because he came in with three years of service.
Yeah, but I don't think for them at work, like after the vacation.
And we had that discussion, Lauren and I had that discussion, so that would be something that would be changing with this approval.
So I move to approve the four. Three vision, the. Any further discussion?
I got one quick question too. So is this something then like rental league now, I, my officers, once they see this, are they going to have to negotiate this?
Negotiate what?
Oh, I think. It's all increasing for you guys, now theirs is not.
As far as I'm concerned.
They're the union though, aren't they? Jeff, don't we, don't we negotiate that through the union?
We got two more years, so once they see this, they're gonna, they're gonna be like, oh, I'm not getting all these dates now. That's my only, my question, we can talk
Right.
Later, because they're, they're not at, they're like five days short from us.
Yeah, but we're talking as many employees versus non-union. I mean, that's the.
So I was just going to bring that up, I would, it would be easier for us to do a January one.
And that gives you time to work through where he is.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, that was my thought. Yeah, yeah. I mean, you would make the revisions, but we wouldn't start the vacation until January one. That makes sense.
Hey, Joe, you let's talk.
Okay, so now, when I came here.
Yeah.
I had two weeks of vacation, okay?
Mm-hmm.
I just started my sixth year.
Mm-hmm.
I have not been given any more vacations since I started, and now I've got to put in another four years to get anything.
Well, you, you'd have.
So absolutely does nothing for people that have been here.
It does do something. You've been here more than five years, you'll get twenty days of vacation, so if you only have two weeks, right? You just said you only have two weeks.
Right?
No, you're two weeks, twenty days, four weeks, for you. So like for me, if I'm reading this right, because I'm not in the union, but I'm over fifteen years.
Which is more than anybody here gets. Kevin, any of them that have been here a long time, thirty days is more than anybody here has. This schedule not only benefits new people, but it benefits the people that have been here. This is an increase for everybody.
I just need to work on getting the folding holidays.
I mean, that is. It is worth mentioning that when we're talking about union and non-union, there are other things that union employees get that non-union employees do not get.
I take it.
And that is worth noting, yeah.
Okay, we have a motion. Let's second all in favor say aye.
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 January one.
You'll get someone to meet you up this year.
No, I'm just saying, I just want to say one fact because there might be people that might look at that, go, I don't know. If I don't retire this year, I'm not going to get my vacation for that because that was a benefit from these thirty years.
It's in the new hand.
What do you mean, vacation for that?
Uh, I see what you're saying. I'm just going to say, my senior, I, I can lose my water guy.
Yeah, but not really, it's like you tell.
It won't be this year, they won't get that vacation.
That's not true, because when Lynn retired, she retired on like March eleventh, and when she got paid out for her earned vacation for next year, she ended up paying back to the village to cover her health benefits for the rest of March. The only time that would benefit somebody is if they left on the very last day of the month where they'd have to, so if they left on September twenty-ninth, they would be paying back health insurance for September thirtieth, which is, ends up being less of a cost than what they get paid.
I'm going to suggest. Have this intermediate time to sort out these details.
Okay, uh, there's a sympathy card here for everyone to sign for Pat Ray's, what was it?
Pat Ray's brother died, uh, last week, approximately, so.
I'd sign if you pass.
I got sympathy card to give to him, so. I got a lot of work to do.
Okay, the last and final item is discussion and consideration, um, when they had the electrical substation rubbing ribbon cutting. It is getting late. So what, you guys suggestion, Joe?
We were talking, uh, sometime in the first part of October. Um, the little thing that you'll have to do is if there's that any four lines coming, you'll have to put a hole out there.
Oh, yeah, we gotta, we gotta make it a general.
Yeah.
I'm just looking at it, when it would be good, because I know you guys had meetings the first, the third, the second week.
I won't be there the second week, because I like county more. But does that mean on Tuesday?
It'll be on a, in during day, will not be at.
Oh, day kind of thing, yeah.
Will there be beer?
Only if you bring it.
They're always.
Bring it.
Isn't there always a new players?
Yes, well, it's not a rhythm company, they don't have beer.
What do you think? Those deep fried cheese. Are you talking like?
No, no, I'm talking during the day.
Mike, Mike wouldn't be able to make it, sure.
These guys, because if we have like MP and them guys be there, these guys are paid during the day and they're going to be like, ah.
Should do like a one o'clock.
Okay, yeah, so it's online now?
Somebody is spending time.
The new station?
Oh, yeah, it's been online.
And we can get money from that. Yeah, yeah.
So is that, is that, okay?
One o'clock.
One o'clock on the second week, you just got to pick a day.
Monday?
Are we picking a day?
We are picking a day. The ninth?
Can be.
Yeah, it can be any day.
Let's do it on a.
Well, there's a WPPI training that day that Beth and I are going to.
So, so don't do that.
Don't do that day.
And, I guess, yeah.
We can do Tuesday.
October, right?
The Thursday.
I say we do it Tuesday.
Tuesday at one o'clock.
Tuesday at one o'clock.
Once the October tenth. Let's see, October tenth.
Ten, three.
And then, Tuesday, one o'clock at one P M.
Presumably, you gotta go out Elmer Road to get there, right?
Or you could go down Belleville.
And just FYI for everybody's in this group, you cannot go past the gates. Unless you will be accompanied by a line, matter what your status is, that is a danger serving. You will be escorted by lines. They don't even go into that. They get too close to something in there, you go for a sign. You come out looking like a piece of bread.
Does anybody, wardman, any wardmen have anything else? Not we are adjourned.